What's going on with this?
Thank you.
Twenty twenty Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting is convened. Pam, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Platt?
Here.
Commissioner Gambetti? Commissioner Moreland Campuya?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
Chair Cruz?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll start with Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Platt?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Myers?
On January eighteenth, I attended the meeting with the Governors Inslee and Brown on the Fix the Five Campaign, trying to get a new bridge. And then also, on January eighth, I attended the Hyatt grand opening with Director Branham and with Chair Cruz.
Great, thank you. And that's the only item I have, too, is I attended the grand opening of the New Convention Center Hyatt, which is great and an exciting development. Director Branham?
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and Commissioners, and Happy New Year. I want to begin just by acknowledging that this is our first board meeting since the passing of City Councilmember Nick Fish. I had the privilege of meeting with Commissioner Fish almost monthly for nearly a decade, I mean, for a number of years, and always appreciated his advice in council. Saw him in many community events, and it's just been a tremendous loss for the community. So our thoughts are with his family and his staff, and just wanted to acknowledge that we will miss him, so. I, sorry, I attended an open house hosted by the Williams and Russell Project Working Group on Thursday, January ninth, where community members shared their perspective around priorities for the project with project working group members, who will be really synthesizing that and digesting this information as they develop the request for proposals. If you have not yet and would like to add your input in terms of what you'd like to see on this important property, you can go to prosperportland.us and click on the Russell and Williams Project Community Survey. The next Williams and Russell Project Working Group meeting will be held Wednesday, February fifth, from five to eight, five thirty to eight PM at the New Song Community Church. Also, on Thursday, January ninth, I joined the Commissioners and attended the official grand opening for the new Hyatt Regency Portland at the Convention Center. This is a project that was thirty years in the making, and it was a fantastic celebration. Really like to appreciate Metro for spearheading this project. And there's too many staff members to note because over thirty years, our team was always involved, but just want to recognize the number of staff members here at Prosper and on the development team and within Metro who made sure, and community visionaries who made sure that we now have a convention center hotel and are seeing an uptick in national conventions as we had hoped, so great news there. Last year, as you'll recall, the Board approved program guidelines for the Thriving Small Business Loan Program. I'm pleased to share that Tadora, a local B Corp certified company producing a plant-based skin and hair care collection crafted from blends of sustainably harvested rainforest superfoods, you can say that three times, has received Prosper Portland's first thriving small business loan program, or loan, loan. As a reminder, the Thriving Small Business Loan Program addresses access to capital faced by underrepresented populations, especially businesses in low-income areas and those owned by people of color and by women. The program provides flexible financing for startup and early-stage companies and rewards entrepreneurs that connect with technical assistance through our inclusive business resource network. You can learn more about Tadora by visiting the website, tadorabeauty.com, and I want to acknowledge the great work of our lending team, in particular Kay Little, who worked to develop this new product. So looking forward, I want to highlight a new grant opportunity and some upcoming events. The Inspiring Diversity Grant application is now open. This is our second year of offering the Inspiring Diversity Grant, which is focused on assisting companies looking to launch or expand a diversity or equity program within their organization. The grant offers funding for local traded sector companies, so those companies who sell goods or services outside of the region, to inspire creative equity-related best practices around workforce, community partnership, marketing, and communications. The deadline for the application is Thursday, February sixth, at five PM, and you can find out more at prosperportland.us/inspiring to find out more. On Monday, January twentieth, I'm looking forward to attending the Scanner Foundation's thirty-fourth Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast Event. On Wednesday, January twenty-six, twenty-second, I'm looking forward to attending the Annual Business for a Better Portland Builders Dinner, and I want to encourage people to attend the Lansu Chinese Gardens Annual New Year's Celebration, which begins Saturday, January twenty-fifth. You can find out more if you go to Lansugarden.org. This is really a wonderful event, and I can't encourage people to go enough. Okay, last but not least, we have four new staff members who I'd like to introduce to the Board. Very delighted to have each of them with us, so I'm going to start with, I'm going to go right to left. So Sharon Smith is here with us. She's a new Senior Administrative Coordinator within the Development and Investment Department. Sharon comes to us having worked at Mount Olivet for many years, most recently serving as their Senior Communications Coordinator. Sharon went to school in Portland. It's good to have a fellow Grant High School in Irvington alum, exactly another one, Joe, I see you, and attended Holy Cross College in Worcester, Massachusetts, where she earned her bachelor's degree. She loves her pit bull gunner, plays soccer, and has recently transitioned from running to spinning, so we're delighted to have Sharon with us. And Vie Rochino is our new accounting technician within the Finance and Business Operations Department. Vie and her son moved to Portland several years ago from the Chicago area. She earned her bachelor's degree in International Studies at Loyal University in Chicago and has been focused on accounting coursework at Portland Community College and a post-bacc laureate certification at Portland State University since moving to Portland. Vie loves to cook, plays soccer with her son, and enjoys true crime fiction, so we're delighted to have Vie. And then we have Hope Whitney, who's our new Assistant General Counsel. She has over seventeen years of experience, seven years in private practice, working with developers and other private parties on real estate development and finance, and for the last ten years as a Senior Assistant General Counsel at Metro, where Hope worked on real estate transactions, intergovernmental agreements, and public-private partnerships. She grew up in Portland and went to Beaverton High School. She attended Amherst College and then later Berkeley Law School, as well as City Planning School. She likes to explore cities, to camp, and to watch her kids sporting events, so we're delighted to have Hope with us. And last but not least, we have Shay Flaherty Betten, who's our new Entrepreneurship and Community Economic Development Manager within the Economic Development Department. Shay is joining us from Hacienda CDC, where he served as Director of the Portland Mercado. For the past few years, he's overseen the Mercado's Affordable Kitchen Program, cultural programming, and small business support services. Originally from Columbia, he previously worked at El Programa Hispano, Yellow Seed dot org, and Amazon Watch. He holds a BA from UC Berkeley, and outside of work, he enjoys reading, travel, and food culture in all its forms, so we are thrilled to have Shay with us on our team. Thank you.
Thanks very much, and welcome to all of you. We're delighted to have you with us, so thanks very much. All right, so next are the meeting minutes for November thirteen, twenty nineteen. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved, thank you. So next, we have public comment, and we have several people here to comment from the Healthy Communities Coalition. Vivian Satterfield, Linda Sporer, Jesus Savleda, and Desi Wright. And we're having trouble with our timer today. Normally, we have a timer that beeps after three minutes, but we don't have that today. So, that doesn't mean you're off the hook, so. So, but if you could generally try to stick to about three minutes, that would be great.
Oh, our, thank you, our prepared remarks are under three minutes long, but thank you for the generosity of the time. Good afternoon, Prosper Partner Commissioners, Directors, and Staff. It was great to actually hear some of the biographies and introductions of some of the newest staff members, so thank you for that. My name is Vivian Satterfield. I work for Verde. I'm here today, though, representing the Healthy Communities Coalition. Our coalition is more than twenty organizational members representing communities of color, environmental justice, transportation justice, disability rights, small business, and organized labor. I'm joined by representatives of many of these organizations and their members here today. And then we have, of course, Linda, Desi, and Jesus, who will provide brief testimony, sharing their lived experiences. And we're also submitting written testimony on behalf of Adela Maza, a union janitor, and I believe that will be passed out and shared with you later. While your agenda today includes a business item related to a contract with Continuum related to the Broadway Corridor, I'm, myself and my colleagues here are here to speak more broadly and substantively about the progress that our coalition is making with Prosper Portland, Continuum, and the city of Portland on a comprehensive community benefits agreement. I want to remind you all that we are negotiating a CBA because the former and older PDC's way of doing business has been out of alignment with the need to create good jobs and ensure opportunities, especially for Black, Indigenous, and other communities of color here in Portland. Formerly PDC-backed deals historically have inflicted massive social and economic costs, especially to these communities of color. Support for job creation has amounted to poverty wage jobs and has done nothing to create the generational wealth communities of color need and deserve. So in setting out to develop the state-of-the-art, once-in-a-lifetime generational opportunity here at the Broadway Corridor, Mayor Wheeler and Director Branham and Prosper Portland staff have described and framed the project as transformative, as world-class, and standard-setting. Despite more than six months of negotiations, we just completed our fourteenth negotiation earlier this week, we're not setting any standards yet. Our coalition's primary concern is that the community benefits agreement that will lock in the foundation for racial justice and the inclusive values we espouse will not deliver unless Continuum and the city of Portland's bureaus are held to the standards that we collectively negotiate. So our position is that to enforce the standards, we are continuing to negotiate, that Prosper Portland must ensure that our community benefits agreement is binding on all relevant parties and will be meaningfully enforceable by our coalition and other community stakeholders. In addition to ensuring that Continuum is held accountable to the terms in the negotiation, Continuum must be included, that is our belief. Additionally, and equally important, city bureaus responsible for components of Broadway Corridor development, such as the Infrastructure Bureau's responsible for transportation, housing, parks, water, and planning and sustainability, must be included and bound to the final comprehensive community benefits agreement. Without this commitment from Prosper and the city of Portland, there will be no CBA. As a coalition, we will not sign a document that gives up our right to protest the project. This is a standard element in CBAs, until we are convinced that it provides the robust community benefits we need and that is enforceable with all relevant parties to the agreement. Thank you again for the generosity of your time and listening to my comments. I'll encourage you to listen thoughtfully to my HCC colleagues, who have come to share directly with you their lived experiences, emphasizing how a strong community benefits agreement is indeed felt and seen broadly in the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Linda Sporer. I have worked in the security industry for thirty, for twenty years as a frontline security officer, supervisor, and training manager. I have worked for non-union companies, both large and small, and now I am a member of CSEIU Local Forty-Nine. I am a grandmother, and I have survived breast cancer twice. I am here today with the Healthy Communities Coalition because I hope that the new Broadway Corridor district will deliver honest promise of equality for workers like me. When I started my career, the industry standard was poverty wages with no benefits or health insurance so expensive that workers couldn't afford to use it. This is still often the case today when building owners choose non-union security companies. But a few years ago, security officers formed a union and But a few years ago, security officers formed a union and are raising standards around the region. Now my coworkers and I receive better pay, predictable raises, and good health insurance. And as a cancer survivor, I know how important it is to have decent health insurance. But working with a union contract isn't just about wages and benefits. It is about respect. Before, as one of the few women in private security, I experienced sexual harassment on a daily basis. There are so many stories that I could tell you, and I'm just going to tell you a couple of them. When I was training officer and quality management representative, one male officer made lewd gestures and comments at me when I did my job and pointed out something he needed to do. I will spare you the details of those lewd gestures that he did. He was reassigned to another site but returned a few months later. Other female coworkers, male coworkers, called me ragtag of the year or the wicked bitch of the West. One officer managed to access my computer before I came on shift and set up pornography for me to see when I logged into my computer. I knew that if I stood up for myself, I was at real risk of losing my job, no matter what civil rights laws say. I was a well-employed employee and I would be easily to get rid of. Since then, the Me Too movement has brought to light what my coworkers and I know sexual harassment and discrimination are too widespread. Thankfully, I am not afraid to speak up anymore. With the union, security officers know that our jobs are protected when we raise concerns. Now managers know that if they allow harassment to happen or if they take part in it, we are going to say something. We have fair work rules and grievance procedures to defend our rights that pulls our team together and creates a better work environment for us. With the Broadway Corridor project, you have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make sure that all jobs are good jobs in the district, including for security officers like me. I ask you to make sure that the community benefits agreement you are negotiating with the Healthy Communities Coalition includes enforceable standards to create quality jobs for service workers with decent wages and healthcare and respect on the job. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you and your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jesus Alceda, a proud member of the Carpenters Union Local 146. And, well, I don't have a prepared speech or anything like that. I could just tell you what pretty much I experienced before the union. And it was living paycheck to paycheck. I mean, not, pretty uncertain about what the future of my, my kids had, you know, had. And, well, now I can probably say that, you know, I'm able to, to provide for them, not worry about what next week, you know, if we're going to have good, good money coming in or not. And I can actually plan for their future and help them beat the statistics and have my three Latina daughters go to college. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Desi Wright, Representative for the Carpenters Union, but I came up through the pile drivers apprenticeship with Local 196. When I got into the, the pile drivers ten years ago, I never saw another woman on a job site. It was a, kind of like, what, did I really just see that? When you did run into one? You know, I never saw another woman at our, at our training center. I never saw another woman at a, at a union meeting. It was a very rare sighting when, when you actually saw another woman, you know, another woman in this line of work. I was fortunate enough that when I was, I was coming up through the apprenticeship, there were projects that had requirements for females to be on them. And that was, allowed me to get my foot in the door. Prior to joining the union, I was working as a manager, normally twelve to fourteen hours a day, for a wonderful salary of about thirty-five thousand a year, where I could not afford to have an apartment in the city by myself. And when I got into the union and having those agreements, them requiring women on different projects, gave me the opportunity to get on those projects, to learn the skills, and to prove myself and turn it into a career, where now, ten years later, I'm finally buying my first home by myself. And now in my position as a representative with Carpenters Union, I also chair the Sisters in the Brotherhood Committee here in Portland and am helping to bring other sisters up through there. We have got so much energy, so much passion that these young people are bringing. It's a very diverse group that are ready to get after it, and community benefit agreements are going to help them to learn the skills. And I want to see each and every one of those sisters at our sisters' meetings out there, building the city, being able to buy those houses, provide for their families. And hopefully, one of these days, they'll take my job and I'll be sitting on a beach drinking a margarita somewhere.
I think that's the image that we're going to leave you all with on today's blustery and, and potential snow day. And, you know, we have a precious few negotiation sessions left, and I know staff is working really hard. And I just want to emphasize the need to maximize community benefits through this agreement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for coming today, and thanks for participating in the process, too. And I know it's, it's daunting, so I really appreciate your input. Does anybody have any comments or questions or anything? Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to also add, thank you, Vivian, for sticking with it for the two and a half years. Almost three years of the steering committee, as well as, and into negotiations for the community benefits agreement. Your input and leadership has been incredible. So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you.
Thanks so much. All right. So next, we have the consent agenda items. Well, we have no more public testimony, I guess, correct? Yeah. No more public test, okay. All right. So next, we have two consent agenda items. This is Resolution Number 7351 and 7352 on our agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve those items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. They're both approved. Okay. So next, we're going to do a little procedural maneuver. The meeting of the Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners is now adjourned. The members of the Prosper Portland Board will now meet as the agency's audit committee to consider the next item on the agenda. And this is the accounting and CAFR report. Yes, I don't. Okay, I didn't know. All right. Michelle, do you want to go first? Thanks for coming.
Good afternoon. Oh, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Whaley. I'm the lead accountant for the, for Prosper Portland. With me is Keith Simovich and Jim Lanzaratta from Moss Adams. Also in the audience is Carrie Guy. She represents, excuse me, the city of Portland, City Auditor's Office. She manages the contract. We're here today to request that you accept and approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or commonly known CAFR, for the year ended June 30, 2019, and accept the communications with those charged with governance from Moss Adams. Those things are in your packet. Prosper Portland's CAFR for 2018-19 satisfies Oregon Revised Statute 297 Municipal Audit Law, which requires municipal corporations to undergo an annual audit and subsequently publish financial statements that include the auditor's opinion on the financial condition and the results of operations for the period under audit. Additionally, Prosper Portland's charter requires the agency undergo an annual independent audit by a licensed municipal auditor. The audit and annual report represent the largest body of work for the accounting team. The process begins in late spring with an interim audit work, and concluded this year on November nineteenth, 2019, with the issuance of the audit opinion. I would like to thank our audit team for their great work supporting the annual audit and production of the CAFR, including our manager, Tony Barnes, and accounting staff Gina Bixby, Chan Salie, and Diada Rusigno. I'd also like to thank Ms. Guy and all the staff at Moss Adams for their role in the audit and assisting us to get to successful completion. And I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to kind of close the process and report the results to you. And just seems to be our history. We always follow something pretty glitzy and jazzy, and maybe our report isn't quite as jazzy as thinking about operating heavy equipment. Always a childhood dream of mine to operate a big piece of equipment and build things like what you see around you downtown. But at least you can feel satisfied that the work that your staff does in preparing this document and our work in auditing enables you to do those fun development projects here in Portland. So at least we can feel a little part of that process. So we want to talk to you about what it was that you engaged us to do, and of course, you want to hear a little bit about the results of that. And I would say that our audit, I, I would put it actually into five phases. There's three on this slide. I would add a couple more to this. I think in an audit, you probably have a pretty good understanding that our task is to do some work to verify the accuracy of the financial numbers and the information that's produced in here. And Keith will share a few details of that, but I think you have a good understanding that we're talking directly to third parties, like your bankers. We talk with your counsel, and we look at source documents and really that independent verification of this information. And we issue an opinion, which we're going to talk about. A second important element, though, is that your staff relies on what we call internal controls, our jargon. In layman's terms, it's those checks and balances that they utilize to make sure that they can put together an accurate financial statement. Our job is to look at those checks and balances. Are they designed appropriately, and are they being followed? If there are significant weaknesses in those that could lead to material errors in your financials, we have an obligation to bring that to your attention, and we issued a report that Keith is going to talk about. A third element, you know, you are an Oregon municipal corporation, and that invokes a number of requirements of your auditor to test your compliance with specific state laws. There's probably seven or eight areas, and in our meetings with the audit committee, we've gone into more detail. But most significant in that is your budget, budget law, and compliance with local budget law. So that whole process that you go through to adopt the budget, involve the community, and then the administration of it after it's adopted, a big part of our testing there. Another big area for you is all the public purchasing. You've got a lot of contracts that you let in a year. There are state laws that govern how you do that, plus your own contract review board and your own policies. So a big part of our audit is determining if, in fact, you're meeting not only state laws, but your own policies about how you go about that. And we issue a report. So there's a third element. I mentioned a fourth element, which is you're very fortunate. You've got staff that can put this document together. We don't do that for you. Very few governments in Oregon, believe it or not, have the ability and the expertise in-house to draft that document. So auditors tend to draft it, which creates sometimes challenges, right? We don't want to audit our own work. But anyway, your staff drafted this. So a fourth element's not on the slide, but we provide that in-depth technical review of this and provide feedback to your staff on possible improvements and just help them to make sure you're putting together a quality document. And Michelle didn't take credit, but you actually put together what we call a complete, comprehensive annual financial report. And what that, in order to give it that title, that means you go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the accounting standards. There's a statistical section in here, which has tenure trend information. There's a letter of transmittal in here, which provides additional information to readers of your statements. And there are some additional disclosures or formatting issues of how you put this document together. So our review provides some technical feedback on whether we believe you've continued to meet the, the additional requirements there. And I believe it is, you have already submitted this to the Government Finance Officers Association for a special award of excellence. And I, we fully anticipate that, again, you will achieve that award, given the additional elements that you included in here. And then finally, a fifth element is just the reporting. What we're doing today is coming back before you, you follow a best practice in having an audit committee. So we come before the audit committee, we talk about our plan, we get feedback, we talk to audit committee members, and then we get this chance to come back before you to deliver the results. So that's how I would break this down. And Keith, if maybe you would help us and talk a little bit more about our audit process.
Right. So every audit that we do, we kind of break it up and, and kind of decide at the beginning of the audit to take a really fresh look at the, at the organization for the year and the transactions and say, well, where do we think the most risk is? And make sure we are designing appropriate procedures to, to address those risks in our audit process. So we look at, at that with, with fresh eyes every year. We talk about that as a team. We talk to management. We read through the minutes of the commission during the year to really get an idea of, you know, what's been going on throughout the year. Are there new accounting standards that came into play? Is there new members of, of management? Has there been a lot of turnover? Is there any change in internal controls, specifically, you know, IT systems that change? That, that creates a lot of risk, of course, in a, in a year of conversion. And so there's a lot of things that we kind of incorporate into that risk assessment process because we want to make sure we're spending the bulk of our time on those areas. And so we've kind of listed out, and we, and we talk through these areas with the audit committee at the beginning of our process to kind of get that feedback and open those lines of communication with the audit committee in case there's anything else that, you know, we're not aware of that we need to incorporate into this process. So there's about five bullet points here that we've risk assessed higher than kind of the rest of the areas that are included in this document. One is cash investments, you know, always an area that's, you know, that's the most highly coveted asset, right? And most liquid and everything. So it's, we want to make sure there's good controls here, good checks and balances for how cash leaves the, leaves the door and how, how cash comes into the organization as well. We also have some insight into that process just because we are performing the audit of the city as well. And so that pool of cash and investments, we do a lot of procedures surrounding that as well. Loans receivable is, is another area we're looking at specifically with how you're setting your allowance for those loans and how you're monitoring them on an ongoing basis. So that can be an area that there's, there's lots of kind of management subjectivity to how that's set. And so we want to understand those policies. Are you following those policies? Are they appropriate? Are they in line with actual activity over the years? Property held for sale, that's another one that we set as a higher risk, just because we want to make sure how those are recorded on the, on the books and your policies in terms of analyzing those values and are they still appropriate? Should they be reduced at all based on current conditions in the market? IT, that's always one that's continuing to grow on all the audits that we do. It's just a bigger and bigger piece of overall internal controls as all those processes and procedures move to an electronic environment. It's one where we are really diving in and understanding who has access to do what in the system. Are there segregation of duties issues, right? Where one person can do a lot of different transactions with, within the system and has access to do that, and they could cover their tracks because of that privileged access. So that's something that we want to be very wary of. And then, of course, the additional compliance procedures Jim kind of talked about and alluded to with respect to kind of the, the budget process, the public procurement process as well. We spend a lot of time with that, so we risk rate that higher. So just to give you a little more flavor for the audit process, we actually break this up into two different phases, and we come on site and work with your staff at two different points in time throughout the year. One is our internal controls evaluation. So we come on site initially before kind of the books are closed for the end of the year. And the reason that we break up fieldwork in that manner is because we want to incorporate any findings from the internal control evaluation into our risk assessment process. So if we're finding that there's a lack of, of checks and balances in a certain area or there's a lack of IT, security, and access and those types of things, that's going to make us do, pull larger samples or do more work and change our procedures for when we come back and we have final numbers to look at that will feed into this document. And so that's where we spend a lot of time looking at all those different areas that we've kind of risk assessed in addition to a few additional ones here, like payroll, financial close, and reporting, how this document's put together, and what are the reviews and controls along the way. And then we come back once we have final numbers, and we can do a number of different procedures to kind of get comfort over what the values are that are reported in your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So whether that's analytical procedures and sometimes just kind of stepping back and looking at, well, where did you end up in terms of revenues and expenditures? And, and does that make sense in light of what your budget was? What are the transactions that we've been reading about in the commission minutes? What we've been talking to management about? You know, sometimes just stepping back and setting an independent expectation for where we think you should end up based on all those facts and circumstances and comparing it to actual. You can potentially identify some errors that way to see if things kind of don't make sense. So that's one area that we, or one procedure we can employ. Another one is really that independent verification of source documents that, that Jim mentioned earlier as well. And that's where we spend a lot of our time pulling detailed samples, looking at supporting documentation, talking to your attorneys, seeing if there's anything outstanding there that, that should be disclosed in your financial statements as well. So quite a bit of work that goes into this. You know, we spent a few weeks on site. We, we asked for a lot of documents. We suck up a lot of time of your, of your staff, and we're only responsible for a few pages in this, but there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of work that goes into that. To get to this point where we can give you final results and let you know kind of what's included in our audit report. So for those, you know, six or seven pages that we're responsible for, the first report is our report over the accuracy and presentation of these financial statements. And so at the end of the day, if you read through those reports, what you'll see is that we've given kind of an unmodified or really in, in our audit speak, that's synonymous with, with a clean opinion. So exactly what you're looking for. So the accuracy of these documents is, has been verified, and, and we believe they're materially accurate. Our report on, on compliance with, with budget, with procurement, and a few other areas, we didn't have any issues or findings from a compliance standpoint. So, you know, typically, we very often see, you know, different findings related to over expenditures of budget and things like that, but we didn't even have anything to that level this year. So management's been doing a, a good job. So management's been doing a, a good job of, of monitoring those budgets and staying in compliance with that. And then our government auditing standards report, this is kind of going back to compliance with, or any findings we had, or serious findings we had related to internal controls and nothing, no findings were noted in that report as well. So very, very clean and that's a tremendous amount of work that goes into this from management standpoint, the finance staff standpoint to get to this point and get, get to these results as well.
Oh, wow. Great news.
Absolutely. We issue a separate deliverable. It's called our communication to those charged with governance, which they would change the name of that, but that's what, what we call it. And there's a number of items in there. We've kind of had a bullet point for each of the different paragraphs that are included in there. I'm not going to go into these in detail unless you have questions, but the main things that we want to bring up in here is that's a letter where we just discuss kind of how the audit went overall and if there were any, you know, concerning findings and things like that. We always talk about if there were any material audit adjustments through the process. That means, once we arrive onsite, if there's anything where we're finding significant errors in the process and we have to change numbers in order to give a clean opinion, that's something we want to let the, let the commission know about. We didn't have any material audit adjustments, so that means we know management has good controls in place. They've, they've been doing their own audit internally before we even come onsite. So the, the data's been scrubbed and it's clean by the time we get it. And then also, you know, if, if we had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in controls, you know, those, those huge gaps in checks and balances where something could slip through the cracks and not get identified, those are the types of things we want to bring to your attention and discuss with the audit committee as well. We have some best practices and those are things we always want to bring up to the audit committee and work with management to continue to address little things as they come up before they grow to, to larger issues. So that's something we've discussed with the audit committee and management. Other than that, I want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved in this process because it is a lot of work putting this document together. I can't imagine how many hours that, that takes altogether and to go through the audit and everything, but tremendous amount of work and I appreciate working with the team here.
That seems interesting. Takes us, what, maybe 10 minutes to tell you the results?
Yeah.
You know, it takes quite a bit of time to audit this, but it's your staff every day, day in and day out, following the procedures that you laid out that it takes to put an accurate document together. So really hats off to your staff and under the leadership that you provide that enables them to produce such quality financial information.
Oh, well, thanks for your great work, Demoss Adams, as always, but really thanks to staff and especially this year with the new CFO, Adam Lane, joining the agency. That's, I think, especially impressive accomplishment. No hiccups, you know? We just continue on. So that's fantastic. Do any of the commissioners have any comments?
We're on a thank you tour in the new year.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Great job. Okay. So we actually do need to vote, though, on resolution number 7353. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Resolution's approved. Okay. So, let's see. Now we are going to adjourn the Prosper Portland Audit Committee. The meeting of the Prosper Portland Audit Committee is adjourned. The Prosper Portland Board of Commissioners meeting will reconvene to consider the next item on the agenda. So that will be item number nine. And this is an action item regarding the professional services contract with Continuum Partners to serve as the Portland owner's representative for site preparation activities related to the redevelopment of the USPS property in the Broadway corridor. Sarah Harple, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Harple. I'm a project manager in the Development and Investment, Development and Investment Department here at Prosper Portland. I am here before you today to seek authorization of a professional services contract to enter into an agreement with, with Continuum Partners to serve as the owner's representative for certain site preparation activities. This work was recently approved by you acting as our local cover, local contract review board body. But to just briefly recap, we're approaching this in kind of two primary bodies of work. The first is the demolition of the main processing and distribution center, along with removal and reconfiguration of existing onsite utilities, which would include the removal of the electrical transformer building. And then as a separate body of work, a package of contracts would be the abatement and demolition of the vehicle maintenance facility and some hotspot soils remediation, which would include primarily the historic manufactured gas plant, which is located in the northwest corner of the property. This work is also critical for the first phases of infrastructure to support development. So as you can kind of see illustrated here, that would be primarily the extension of Northwest Kearney and Northwest Johnson, where demolition of those buildings is necessary for the extension of that infrastructure and the utilities within them to support early phases of development. So as owner's representative, Continuum would be overseeing that site preparation work and then serving as an advisor to us in our work with the Bureau of Transportation, who would be leading the, the infrastructure work. There is a more detailed scope work attached to the resolution before you today, but just to kind of recap at a high level, this work would include pre-demolition services, so helping us with the selection and contract negotiations with our selected demo design consultants and our CMGC contractors, and helping us establish a schedule and budget for the work. And then moving into our design and permitting, reviewing drawing sets, helping with permitting activities that's necessary, and then overseeing the CMGC work, processing change orders, RFI's, et cetera. And then, as I mentioned, in a more advisory capacity advising us in our coordination with the Bureau of Transportation. The work is, is proposed to be completed by a local representative to be hired by Continuum. Their fee accommodates for approximately one FTE, whether this is completed by a single person or a combination of senior and more junior representatives to complete that work. It also provides for approximately just over another FTE, a combination at a more strategic level of the, of the Denver-based teams, so at their kind of development manager and director level positions, as well as some administrative support, and then travel for one Denver-based representative twice a month to come out to oversee the work. The, our business and workforce equity program requirements would also apply to all phases of both professional services as well as construction or demolition in this case on the site. We anticipate the demolition of the main building will occur beginning with design in early 2020 and completing in about mid-2022. The vehicle maintenance facility scope work is much simpler, so that would be completed over this summer. As I mentioned, this site work is critical to those first phases of infrastructure going in, as well as the relocation of the post office retail function to the adjacent parking structures so that demolition of that main building can occur. We are actively seeking solicitations for the demo design teams and the CMGC teams for this work. This work is also critical in nature because of the extensive holding costs we have for those facilities. So we're paying approximately a million dollars a year, eighty-five thousand dollars a month. So any cost savings that we can accomplish by having a well-qualified owner's rep to help facilitate that work will also result in cost savings in those holding costs moving forward. We believe Continuum is, has especially aligned interests in expediting the completion of these site remediation and site preparation activities because that also allows for their development to occur. Continuum was selected as our development advisor and to have rights to negotiate on phases of the redevelopment through a competitive request for qualifications process. They were selected in both in terms of their, their vision alignment of the values with the project, but also because of their extensive experience in projects of this similar nature. Specific to site preparation activities, they have recently completed on their University of Colorado Health Sciences Center, abatement and demolition of about 2 million square feet of building spread over 24 acres. And so they have extensive experience in this work, as well as coordinating it with adjacent site work remediation and infrastructure development. And just as a side note to an update on, on related aspects of the project, we are also in active negotiations with Continuum on a disposition and development agreement specific to the northern half of the properties and how the obligations and requirements within a disposition and development agreement also relate to the community benefits agreement, which is under negotiation now, as well as our city investment package to support that work. So in serving as their role as owner's rep, they would also allow for close coordination of that site preparation work with that vertical construction in early phases. That, questions?
Questions? Comments? All right. Great job. Thank you very much. Okay, so...
Chair Cruz, can I just, before you, but I just want to recognize Sarah Harple, who is managing probably our largest project to date and has a great team beside her, but I just want to recognize the number of balls that Sarah is keeping up in the air very gracefully and appreciate your work. So, thank you.
Really. Great job. All right. So would someone like to make a motion to approve resolution number 7354 regarding the professional services contract?
Still moved.
Thank you. Seven seconds. Great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution is approved. Thank you. All right. So next up, we have another action item. This is adopting the Third Amendment to the Willamette Industrial Urban Renewal Plan and adopting the Eleventh Amendment to the amended and restated Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. And Joanna Figueros will join us. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Joanna Figueros. I'm a project manager to, with the Development and Investment Team here at Prosper. And, let me see if I can do this. Yeah. I'm here today to ask the board to approve an amendment for both the Willamette Industrial Tax Increment, Tax Finest, the TIF district, as well as the Interstate Corridor. The goal is to, well, the project that we're looking to get through this amendment, and I'm sorry, it's not showing me the...
It won't show the goals.
Okay. So the goal is to purchase a property that is currently one block out of the Willamette Industrial, URA, and one block within Interstate. The project would create new jobs as well as prosperity for people of color in the area. And there's also a great opportunity for partnership there as the board is very interested in partnering with us. So this is just showing the map and the Willamette Industrial would gain 5.6 acres and the Interstate will lose 5.3. And the difference is because of that little street that is kind of like not yellow, not blue, that it needs to be amended as well. And would, we would only be amending to include that property. The project is to create what I'm calling the PDX maker space that may change in the future, but is a, the property is a 48,000 square feet building that has a commissary kitchen, an industrial area, some office space that needs to be used for maker space. It sits on 2.6 acres of land, so there's a lot of outside space as well, and there's a garage on the back. And we've been discussing creating a shared space focused on people of color. The commissary kitchen is a big need in the city right now. Commissioner Platt had the opportunity to walk the, the property with me a few months ago. We have submitted a letter of intent to purchase the property, but don't have an answer yet. We would like to amend so we can take that out of the contingency of the, this intent to purchase. The partnership support has been very interested in partnering with us on this project because they see it as a great way to work on their DEI as well. It's not a huge investment for them, but it would be something that, since it's focused on people of color, they see it as a great potential there, as well as we have discussed with Business Oregon to get a loan if the, if the partnership doesn't go through or if we just want to get a loan for a portion of it. We currently have 4.1 million at Willamette Industrial. Then we kind of close, we didn't close the district, but we stopped collecting money from that district back in 2014 and the money has been sitting there and we just found that to be a great opportunity to invest. Again, focused on people of color, so there's an equity impact. Some of the, the folks that I have been talking to about different shared spaces in the city, one of the things that two people told me is that they don't even get inquiries from people of color for the space, which was very, it kind of gives me a hint that there is a need for space, that people are feeling welcome and a part of it and there is a community. So that's really the goal for this project. We brought this to the North Northeast CDI twice. They are totally okay with it. There is not an industrial goal for this CDI, so they don't see this as a loss. And the goal is really like, instead of using money that is within that district, we use money that is in another district that has been sitting there for a while and is really for industrial usage. Next up, so we are currently negotiating with the brokers for the property. The property has been on the market, market for a while, so if this is approved, we'll take that contingency out. There are a couple of other things that we're negotiating. Parallel with negotiating a partnership with the board, we are hoping to, in the next, one of the contingencies, we are asking six months of due diligence. So I foresee us bringing this back to the, to the board in the summer, spring or summer of this year, to consider both the acquisition and the partnership. And then after that, if everything goes well, we can just close on the property and start some redevelopment. And back at that time, I'll bring all the details on the project as well. There is a very large business plan going on, so...
Great. It's exciting.
Any questions?
Questions? Comments? No? All right. Great. Thank you. I meant to send you something. Now I remember. I'll be, I have some information to send you. I'll do that.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. All right. So would someone like to make a motion to approve resolutions number 7355 and 7356?
Still moved.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motions are approved. Your resolutions are approved. Thank you. Okay. So next is item number 11. This is also an action item, adopting the Second Amendment to the Lentz Town Center Urban Renewal Plan. And Carl Dinkelspiel is going to join us and Tony Barnes. Yeah?
Just for our control, I think we need to have two separate votes rather than a vote on both of those resolutions.
Oh, do we? Okay. Oh, sorry. All right.
So could you just call on the first resolution and then...
Sure.
And then call on the second.
Sure. Yeah. All right. So why don't we, let's, we'll rewind for a second here. Would someone like to make a motion? Well, we've already got motions to approve for both of them, so we don't need to do that. So let's do a vote then on resolution number 7355. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. That passes unanimously. And then next, resolution number 7356. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. They both passed. Thank you. All right. Sorry, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz. Commissioners, Executive Director Brannum, I'm Tony Barnes, Finance Manager, Prosper Portland. I'm joined by...
Carl Dinkelspiel, Development Manager, Prosper Portland.
And we're going to present to you today, resolution 7357, which is an action item to formally amend the last date to issue debt for the Lentz Urban Renewal Area Plan from June 30, 2020 to June 30, 2024. There we go. So the, I'm going to talk for a few minutes about some of the amendment impacts and some of the financial implications of the amendment, the proposed amendment, and then hand it over to Carl for our discussion of the five-year action plan and status and next steps. So a few points on the, the impacts. This amendment does not change the maximum indebtedness of the district. It remains as is. What it does do is allow for more flexibility in the issuance of debt under the remaining maximum indebtedness, which is approximately $59 million for the district. So that, that could be issued over the next four years. It replaces what had been a planned bond issue, it's a long-term bond issue, that was planned for this spring before the last date, the existing last date to issue debt, with the ability to issue short-term debt over the next four years. With a, using short-term debt is a much more flexible and efficient financial way of reaching maximum indebtedness. On the strategic plan objectives, really extending the last date provides, as I mentioned, more flexibility and efficiency in how the final debt proceeds are received. It saves on issuance costs from a long-term bond. It saves on establishing bond reserves for a bond, long-term interest related to bonds, but also staff time for Prosper Portland staff and City of Portland debt management staff that are involved in the bond issuance process. The additional resources gained by the savings could support additional projects in the district moving forward. The summary in the presentation here illustrates, on the top, what the existing forecast is if the last date to debt, issue debt remains June 30, 2020. And on the bottom, comparing it to the bottom, what the forecast would look like with an amendment and using short-term debt, annual pay-as-you-go financing instead of issuing a long-term bond. The existing forecast right now includes net bond proceeds of almost $40 million, combined with existing short-term revenue, it's about $51, $52 million for projects. Compared to a short-term scenario over the four years, we'd be continuing to issue about $12 million a year in short-term debt that comes with no interest cost, very, very little issuance cost. But because we wouldn't have issuance costs and a bond reserve related to a long-term bond, we would have closer to $59 million in proceeds for projects. Now, as you can see, the maximum indebtedness with the existing forecast would all be used at once with the June 30, 2020 scenario. Under an extension scenario, that would go down over time as that debt is issued. Now, with the existing forecast, the bond reserve potentially could be released at the end of the bond period to be used for projects, but it also could be used to pay off the debt earlier. So there are some options there that would be evaluated in 2024. So one of the other major benefits here for going a long-term bond and instead using short-term debt over the long term is that it would decrease the date, I mean, it would shorten up the date in which bonds are defeased, existing bonds are defeased in the district. So right now, under existing forecast, all debt would be paid off by 2026. That's the current forecast. Instead of doing that, using short-term debt, we could shorten that by one year. So the tax increment revenue could be released and go back to the City of Portland, Multnomah County, other taxing jurisdictions, actually one year earlier than what's currently planned by using this amendment scenario. So it benefits projects and programs for the district, but it also the overlapping taxing jurisdictions. My last slide here represents currently what's programmed in the five-year, the budget and the draft five-year forecast for direct investments. This is including the current assumption of a $40 million bond sale. It's about $49.7 million in remaining resources. About 14.7 would go towards the housing set aside based on the city set aside policy. Business lending and property redevelopment's about $27 million. Grants, infrastructure projects, close to another $7 million. So this is, for the most part, not committed projects with the exception of infrastructure that's for the Leach Botanical Garden commitment. But this would be revisited through the annual budget process with the Board and with City Council over the next few years as we look at the allocation of resources between these categories and what specific projects it could be. And I'm going to hand it over to Carl to walk through the status of the action plan.
Thank you, Tony. Actually, my present, my part of the presentation is quite different, so I guess I would stop and say, do you have questions about the numbers for Tony before I launch into the action plan? Or we could save it to the end.
Without getting too technical, short-term versus long-term bonds. Any financial risks in shifting from one to the other during this period of time?
I would say it's, there's less risk with short-term bonds. Both, both short-term and long-term bonds need to be authorized by the Board as well as City Council, so any action would be going to both bodies. And actually, if we do a long-term bond, if we close a district by 2020 and still want to issue the debt, that would have to come before City Council the next few months. And we'd have to identify what those next steps are pretty quickly.
Tony, I just want to, the preponderance of resources would come from de jure. Is that right? So it would be overnight borrowing and not bonding. And without getting too technical, do you want to try to explain that? So, or maybe you can, I'm going to try to do it, and then you can correct me. So my understanding of what short-term, what de jure debt is that we would actually be getting the direct tax proceeds that would be paid. So rather than have to borrow against future tax revenue, we would be using the taxes that are generated. And that allows us not to have borrowing costs. There's still overnight borrowing costs because TIF has to be, it has to be a debt issuance. So there's an overnight borrowing, but that's different than having to issue long-term debt. You going to fix anything?
That's correct. That's absolutely right. So the de jure is represented by the $12 million per year on the bottom scenario, where there's a very, very, very minimal issuance cost for that overnight borrowing. But based on, we're going to by statutes 457, since we can't directly spend TIF tax increment revenue, it needs to be converted to debt proceeds, known as short-term debt or de jure.
And the market for that overnight borrowing is stable for the foreseeable future?
Right. We usually enter into about a three-year agreement with a bank, the city does, to establish that relationship once approved by City Council to lock in that relationship. So we're going down that, we would go down that path with this scenario when we renew that three-year contract.
So my question is about programmatic implications of spreading it out versus front-loaded, and I think that's probably going to go to Carl's portion of the presentation, correct?
Probably, yes. Well, at least a piece of it.
Maybe that can be a.
At least a piece of it, yeah. Thanks for the segue. All right. So, sort of a little bit of the month of Lentz here. So I guess we took the opportunity of this presentation to give you a little teaser. So there'll be much more information coming about the Lentz five-year action plan. I just wanted to give you a little bit of review and really highlight some pretty awesome stuff that's happened in Lentz, certainly over the five years of the action plan, and actually start things that started well before that. So if you recall, the action plan was adopted in 2014, and there were four major action areas. You could see there neighborhood centers, commercial corridors, affordable housing, and open space and industrial lands. There were 39 actions, so each of these has sort of sub-bullets when you look at the action plan. And I just want to highlight really, as I said, just some accomplishments under each of those four action areas. This is the plan map as part of the action plan is, you can see, sort of a bubble diagram. But each of the four action areas are represented in a color, and the rest of the presentation will focus on each of those colors, actually. So I think most notably and most visibly have been changes in the, was the Lentz Town Center, 92nd and Foster and Woodstock. The four projects that I listed here are all on land that Prosper Portland owned, and these, all four of these projects also have Prosper Portland dollars in them. So it's really amazing to think about, you know, I've been here for about 15 years. It's really amazing to think about how the Lentz Town Center looked 15 years or even longer ago than that, and how it looks now. It's quite significant changes. And these four projects are not all, but some of the parts of that change. I also noted at the bottom that not only do we have sort of major projects, but we also have businesses that have moved into town newly. Bell's Italian Bakery has gotten, I think, a lot of great press. It was also a receiver of a Community Livability Grant. Planet Fitness is a major anchor in the Oliver Station project. And I did mention flipside bar and food carts there. It's not, it was another piece of property that frankly myself said, oh, could we ever find a buyer for this property? Was it right hard by the 205 freeway? And in fact, the Lysack Brothers bought it this and turned it into townhomes and a bar and food cart. So a great success there as well. So other accomplishments, you remember the red in the previous map. This is along a commercial corridor, so there's a couple of them here. One is, I just want to, I guess I should speak to this picture. I think that's you, Commissioner Platt? Yeah. Over on, I guess, right side of the picture. This is at the grand opening of the Foster Streetscape. And also to note that Shay Flaherty Benton is also in this in his role as hacienda, whatever you're doing at hacienda Shay. But this is a great sort of moment of, you know, a number of improvement sidewalk and paving and that sort of stuff. So also wanted to talk about other aspects of our, beyond the town centers, 25 small business grants, so in the form of our prosperity investment program. Did I get that right? So 25 of those were made, and 56 of those, as you can see, were businesses of color. And then the planning process, there was some talk, as you read the action plan, you'll see that there was talk about transit and the transit corridors. This is work that we've supported both here and while I was at the Housing Bureau. The planning is almost done for the Vision Rapid Transit line. I did not get final confirmation from this, from our partners at the PBOT, but approval is imminent, and I think construction hopefully would start either this year or in 2021. So this is a picture of Lentz Commons. It's, we always like to show this picture because it's really cool. But the slide is really about homeownership, and this is really an affordable housing homeownership kind of set of bullets here. This is stuff that I worked on when I was at the Housing Bureau. But it's important to note here that that 319 number that's shown there are new homeowners. And if you remember back to the map, that's our yellow area. Those are new homeowners who earn 100% of area median income or less that benefited from the homeownership limited tax exemption, ULTI program, or Assistant Development Charge exemptions. And I think even more importantly than that, this, the grants and loans here is really an anti-displacement tool that the city has had for a long time that PHB administers, and it's for low-income homeowners to help keep them in their home. And it really pays for major repairs like roofs or accessibility ramps or furnaces and those kind of things. And then I guess the last, last major action, the report that you will see soon will talk about industrial lands. There's not as much to highlight there, so I really have not put that in the slide. But we're, here we're highlighting some of the CLG, the Community Livability Grants. The picture here is of Leach Botanical Gardens, some work that we helped contribute to that's led by the Parks Bureau, a new classroom facility, some of you may have gone to that, at Zenger Farms, and some work on the Johnson Creek Wetlands. So all those are grants that, from Prosper Resources. So the coming soon piece, a couple of things just to talk about. The CLG program just issued its most recent request for proposals. We received five applications. The application round just closed. We received five applications. We'll be evaluating those in the next few weeks, hopefully awards next month. And then a lot of things happening at, I think, just generally 92H. It's a little bit of a summary. The bakery blocks portion of that project is starting design and should be in construction by the end of the year. And the developers there, Palindrom Communities, will be working on planning for the larger phase that is, you know, sort of the big green lot, if you will, the first phase of that. And then lastly, just to say, the coming soon is that we have many, many staff here at the agency have been working on the report, the five-year report for the action plan. We have a very rough staff draft of that that's circulating now, and we hope to get that to you in the next couple of weeks. So with that, I will close out, and if you have any additional questions, happy to answer them. Or actually, other people maybe have better answers than I do.
Great summary. Thank you. Any questions or comments? By group today. Okay. All right.
Maybe I'll just add, I think to your question, Chair Cruz, around what the, what having $12 million a year over a longer time period versus a $50-ish million in one lump sum. I think we have put out significant resources, as you all know, in a concentrated way, and we are not anticipating necessarily having those, that kind of concentration of projects in the next few years. So I would be surprised if it created any cash constraints for us. I think we, as we look at what we accomplished over the last five years towards the Lentz Action Plan, I think we have completed the vast majority of what we said we were going to. And so I want to really appreciate staff for their work on that and for our partners who stood up and, from the community and on the private side, and made this a reality. I think the area that we have more work to do is really around industrial land and employment opportunities. And so I would anticipate that we will see investments that are somewhat smaller in scale that would be within that $11 or $12 million a year. So more to come on that one, and I think one of the next steps as we think about what happens in that time period is going back to the community and really checking in with the completion of the five-year Lentz Action Plan and as we enter into our new strategic planning process, about what those priorities will be.
Hypothetically, if we had some big investment opportunity that came along, say, in year two? Would we be able to accommodate that and kind of borrow ahead or find some other offset to, you know what I'm saying? Or would we need to wait to stockpile resources to deal with that?
Like other districts, we could work with the, our partners at the City of Portland to establish a new line of credit?
Got it.
That would be paid off by future tax increment resources.
Doesn't necessarily, you know, pin us down either. Yeah. It just saves us a lot of money.
Right.
So, great. Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah? Okay. So that, let's see. So that is Resolution Number 7357 to adopt the Second Amendment to the Lentz Town Center Urban Renewal Plan. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
All right. Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. So next is number 12. This is an update on the Neighborhood Prosperity Network. And Dana Declan and Damian Crowder, please join us. Thank you. Welcome. Okay? Great.
Okay, got it. Let me figure out what I've got going on here. Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners and Executive Director Brannum. I'm Dana Declan, Program Manager, and Damian Crowder is here to join me, also a project manager. We're both project managers of the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Program here at Prosper Portland. We're here to give you a seven-year update of the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative Program. That will be a program overview, just to kind of remind you what we're doing out here, accomplishments, lessons learned, and then next steps. We have three community partners here to give testimony after we're done with our staff overview. So I'm going to highlight the program overview. So the Neighborhood Prosperity Network is a signature community economic development program for the City of Portland. The overarching focus of the Neighborhood Prosperity Network is a human-centered, inclusive economic development approach. The priorities of the network are all-around stabilization. Business stabilization with business development and business district improvements, community stabilization around ensuring that residents have access to employment so they can stay as the community revitalizes, district visibility around events and promotions, and then overall stabilization around community-led economic property development, really focusing on community benefits. All of this is led by a strong community economic development organizations in the district, and these grassroots economic development organizations are nonprofit organizations where they hire a full-time staff person in the district that are there every day, understanding what the connections in the districts are. They're led by community-directed boards and really have an engine from community volunteers. So the program, the map of the districts, we have seven districts. Six of them are Neighborhood Prosperity Network Initiative districts, and they are all on the east side of the city. And so we really are focused in those districts. Those are all in non-traditional TIF districts and so they are funded with small micro-TIF districts to allow each of these districts to have about a million dollars over seven to 10 years. We are seven years into the seven to 10-year timeframe, so that's just an important piece to note. And then in addition, the St. John's Center for Opportunity is in St. John's. It is in the larger TIF district of Interstate, very clearly community-led and part of the network. So those are our seven districts. High priority of the program is to ensure that historically marginalized communities can remain and grow in the neighborhood and therefore the network were chosen for, or the districts were chosen to invest areas with lower-than-average income, higher concentration of diverse community members, and higher-risk displacement compared to the city average. We have several demographic data points that we just kind of highlighted. I'm not going to read all of them, but I did want to just highlight a couple. So our 42nd Avenue actually has a large population of African-Americans, 16.1% compared to the city's averages, compared to the city, which is 6%. And Rosewood has 23% Hispanic community with the city's average is at 10%. In addition to the race and ethnicity, median household income and education is really an indicator of being able to remain in place. And I'll just highlight that Division Midway's community members, there's 14% have bachelor's degree or higher. So the education level in the community can definitely create a barrier to accessing higher employment. The City of Portland as a whole is 50%, so that's just a key deliverable, interesting fact. The program funding, so I just want to highlight, the picture on this screen is the Commotion Grand Opening. Commotion is a movement center in our 42nd Avenue. That property was purchased and developed by a community member. They added 19 units of housing and two ground-floor units of commercial space. One of those commercial spaces was leased by one of the NPN Districts, our 42nd Avenue, and they operate a movement center in that location. It allows community teachers to provide yoga and dance and different movement activities to their community members at affordable rates. So just wanted to highlight that. So the program that we have, we have, the Prosper Portland Support is in two forms. We have funding through grants, admin and operations to ensure that we have a full-time district manager for each district and support, program support. We have a promotions grant for events and visibility of the district, technical assistance, and that is all about technical assistance around the organizational support. So it's not how we would think of technical support in business technical assistance for other businesses. The district improvement funds are, that micro-TIF district and it's created, generated by funds de jure. So it's as the district creates the funds, it has access. So districts have different funding sources, different funding at different years depending on access. And then this kind of, the extra piece to that is that both Multnomah County and the City of Portland provided support by giving the revenue share back to the districts, which has been really critical to allowing community members having access to funds that are really flexible to be able to do economic development programming in creative ways. So in addition to our funding, both Damian and I are district liaisons and we provide both grant management support, but also just, we're actively connecting on a regular basis with our district managers. We go to all of the district board meetings and are providing a lot of technical support and thought, we're kind of see ourselves as thought partners in the work. Now I'm going to pass it on to Damian to talk about the programming.
Good afternoon, Chair Cruz, Commissioners, Ms. Branum, Executive Director. I'm going to go over some of the community programming that the districts perform themselves. We kind of provide somewhat of the background support, but one of the things in terms of economic development, the districts are great in getting people to act. It's one thing to provide a program, but what do you, how do you get people to take action and get involved? Community building is a big part of the Neighborhood Prosperity Network because it gets people to move from a me to a we mentality. Some of the signature events such as the Jade Night Market, which brought in over 25,000 people to the district, the celebration of culture, also kind of business opportunities for people. Community cleanups are another way that, it doesn't seem like an economic development activity, but more of a neighborhood activity, but it actually is a direct connection for people to take action and change the way their neighborhood looks. It's a small step, but we have noticed as people participate, participation just kind of goes in different ways and they're more likely to get involved in more activities involved in the districts. There are monthly business seminars for the business owners and it's really important that all these activities happen in the districts. The people can take a sense of pride that these events are close to their neighborhood and it's something that they can participate in and not feel out of place. There are a lot of cultural connections as well in terms of, we have people that speak the languages where we kind of learn, what are the touchpoints, what are the predominant languages in this area? In the public testimony part, you'll hear about the cultural liaisons out in DMA, a district where more than 51% of the people, English is a second language. And it's really important to have kind of cultural competencies out in the districts. One of the other great things about kind of this community building around economic development, the St. John's Farmer's Market, for example, runs from May through October. There are 57 vendors this past year. 35% of the vendors are people of color, 42% were women, and they raised over $310,000. In addition to kind of the farmer's market, they also have a food equity program at the farmer's market. So not in addition to this like business support, but it's a way to take care of all the members of the community. They have a matching SNAP program where they match $10 and they also have what they call veggie vouchers through this program, which they distribute through strategic partners such as the Multnomah County Health Department, Bridge Meadows, and Village Gardens. Last year, 74 households enrolled in the program, net redemption rate of 66%. It's really important in each district that every economic strata of the population feels that they are involved, that people aren't priced out through the farmer's market, that we can kind of address food deserts when the opportunity presents itself, and that the people that live there feel that they can kind of participate in all of the economic activities that are going on. Another priority goal of the network is through business development. The business technical assistance that we receive is through another Prosper Portland program, the Inclusive Business Resource Network, and it's really important that all of these activities happen in the district. They're not necessarily directed, that they have to go to a class somewhere else, that they can have one-on-one support with some of the technical, like bookkeeping, some light-touch assistance. And one of the things that is critical to the success of the program is the fact that when we go into these businesses, you know, small businesses, they don't have a lot of time. And it sometimes takes three, four, five, six, sometimes months before some of these business owners are willing to kind of engage and realize that this person is here is actually committed to their success. And I think that is one of kind of like the key things because we've noticed that many times, that first or second visit, there really isn't much traction, but it's kind of the repeated efforts to, for people to see that, you know, these people are committed to being involved in the success of their business. Right here, we kind of have two businesses in our 42nd. So you have Guillermo with Northwest Iron Works and Rosario, Santo Domingo is the firm. It's really great to kind of see businesses just kind of use kind of a suite of Prosper Portland services that are made readily available to them. One of the other things that we kind of learned through kind of the evolution of the program, not only do the businesses need support, but also the residents. The Neighborhood Prosperity Network is really about thriving communities and it's not segmented whether it's businesses or residents. Many times we get asked, it's a business association organization and they're not. They're not neighborhood associations. They're really organizations that are around building healthy and strong communities. We received a lot of feedback early on in the program that people just needed jobs, they needed access to employment, and we launched the net, wow, I can't believe, I'm blanking on this right now, the Workforce Navigator Program. The program is currently managed by Work Systems Inc. And we originally started in 2015 in the Cully and our 42nd districts. Through the years, we've been able to add a navigator in each district. So every district now has a navigator. And one of the key things about the Navigator Program, it's not just someone giving you like, this is a list of jobs, but it's really high-level customer case management. We have, you know, people that come in that don't have Gmail accounts, that don't know how to do a resume. It's not a question of just providing information of where jobs are, but really kind of working with people one-on-one, kind of really pushing them to the next ladder. And then once again, this is another sort of high, just personal touch program that we have. We've also seen some of the districts, they've kind of noticed that age discrimination was a thing that was starting to show up with people coming into the offices. And so they kind of sometimes set up like a physical job boards. Everything is not about what's on the computer and your ability to navigate those systems, but someone that can just kind of really just help you through the process. Another pillar of the NPIs is kind of community-led property development. The top building that we have there is our 42nd, purchased by, from a longtime property owner, and we have multiple small businesses in there and this is a way that we've addressed some kind of commercial affordability issues. On the bottom, we have the Orchards, which is out on 82nd and Division. That one is Rose CDC and Apano kind of manages the ground floor and then we have some community space there. These are the types of programs that we are kind of trying to develop and build. The districts identify that access to capital is an issue and we launched an NPI Opportunity Fund, which is kind of a loan fund to help businesses in the districts acquire property that will have kind of some future benefit to the community. Some of the district programs that we have, as Dana mentioned, the Commotion Movement Space is community space. We have cultural liaisons in districts to kind of help people to kind of navigate, you know, through a common shared language, some kind of government systems, forms. And also, one of the great programs in Rosewood is kind of Legal Services Day. This particular program, people from Rosewood were kind of realizing that, you know, people had barriers to access to employment due to having a criminal history. In order to reduce this barrier and clean up criminal records, they piled Legal Services Day in partnership with the DA's offices, DA Off DA's Office, Metropolitan Public Defenders, and the goal was to remove fines in exchange for community service hours so people can get their license again and apply for jobs and receive housing. One of the programs that you would not think is about economic development, but it does an amazing job in terms of community engagement, St. John's has a clothing closet, which is a donation of clothes. And when people are donating clothes, they're very happy. And then when the community members that need the clothes come in to pick them up, it's an opportunity for them to see all the other services that St. John's Center for Opportunity has to offer, whether it's workforce, whether it's some of the other program, whether the farmer's markets, the veggie voucher program. It's a great point of engagement and also it's a symbol that they are welcoming to everyone in the community. And sometimes I feel that point gets lost. A lot of times with programming, we don't really understand, just because you offer something to someone, how do we make people feel included? And that clothing closet is a perfect example of being there for everyone that lives there, all residents. And it really has done an amazing job of just increasing just local participation. One of the things that we've kind of realized throughout the evolution of the program, Prosper Portland, we kind of look at the number of jobs that exist in a district. We look at storefront grants and that kind of always been sort of kind of one of the traditional metrics that we have for the program. On the PowerPoint, you can see the number of volunteer hours, the number of new jobs and net new businesses and the leverage that the program has experienced over the past seven years. But one of the things that we've kind of learned anecdotally is there were a lot of other benefits that we saw with the community. We saw people that first were unemployed, that would start to volunteer with some of these organizations just to give themselves something to do. Their confidence increases as they see they're making an impact in the community. They're just more confident to apply for jobs and apply for some jobs they didn't think they could get. And just that constant, just contact and desire to do more is like a part of the system. In addition to this, we kind of figure like, how do we measure success for this program? We have this, but are there other ways to do this? And we got involved...
You missed, the picture was taken off.
Ah, no wonder, okay. One of the things we did with the metrics is like, how do we measure the impact of this program? And we contracted with Dialogues in Action to kind of measure impact. And through qualitative and quantitative analysis, each district basically did a survey with some segment of the population and really asked questions about how are they being impacted? How do they feel about what's going on? And through those kind of surveys and things, we kind of realized, you know, there, things kind of came down to like five major areas of impact. Those five that we kind of all agreed to, because every district has their own issues and challenges, is that, number one, traditionally marginalized businesses have the ability to thrive. That was one thing that the survey kind of realized. Number two, business owners create local economic vitality. Number three, business leaders contribute to their community. Four, community members are economically stable and thriving. And five, neighbors are engaged in community building. This process took about nine months to go through with the interviews, quantitative, qualitative analysis, and now we're in the process of putting together like how we measure all those metrics in each district, because it's not a one-size-fits-all. Districts approach things differently and we're now in the stage of like, how do we put this all together? What have we learned over the last seven years? Each district needs its own approach. One of the things that we realized when we kind of did a one-size-fits-all, some of the districts will tune out because certain things didn't apply to them. And so when it was kind of tailored, people kind of realized that, you know, that the impact is right there. One-size-fits-all did not work. Another thing is, you know, this is actually kind of a high-touch program and building relationships takes time. Just because you announce something doesn't mean people participate and trust is a huge part of getting people to participate. Another thing that came up is that like local fundraising is very challenging. If you're working in an impoverished area or area that's lagging in investment, those residents aren't the people that's going to really support the program. So it's like, how do we kind of go out that to kind of create more fundraising opportunities? At our last meeting, at the five-year update, Commissioner Platt has suggested a fundraising consultant. We kind of followed up with that and we contracted with fundraising consultants. And with the help of the fundraising consultants, they helped the districts become just fund-ready. In addition to helping them write grant applications, they also helped them understand the metrics that they need to develop in order to appeal to funders. They also understand, also taught them how to cultivate a donor base. And now they're just kind of better positioned to just raise funds on their own. In the first year, the districts raised over $180,000 with the support of the fundraising consultant, and now they have a better base for fundraising in the future. Access to capital is also something that we continue to look for and that's another struggle that we have with the districts and we're constantly working through. The next steps are, we're going to do more work associated with community-led property development. We're also explore other funding mechanisms for the program to just kind of keep it going. The next steps are, we're going to do more work associated with community-led property development. We're also explore other funding mechanisms for the program to just kind of keep it going. And one of the ongoing challenges is strengthening the boards. One of the things that we learned in dealing with these communities is that we want the board to represent the community. And we want everyone at the table to have a voice and speak as to what the organization's about, what they're doing. And that is something that we strive and continue to improve on. Any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about our funding for the program and kind of how that's evolved or devolved? Or how you want to describe it?
Okay.
That's a me question.
So actually, it's been fairly, you know, consistent and stable. So we started with $50,000 for admin and operations early on. It has been that way until just last year, we actually added 25,000 per district, realizing there was a very large need to really insist in that one staff person wasn't enough. They needed program staff, and so there's a part-time staffing funded in the program now. So we're at $75,000.
Per district.
Per district. $3,000 for promotions, $8,000 for the technical assistance. And then most districts are at about $100,000 per district for the Tiff district funding for the property development. And somewhere between 75,000 and 100,000 is available for the revenue share at this point. So that's, each district is getting those funding. We are providing, you know, we do still have a contract with a fundraising consultant that's helping boost their ability to match, and because their budgets are all very depending on if they have programming that generates funding as well or not, so. But that's a really crucial, there's definitely a couple-year need to really build that fundraising type of capacity.
Other questions?
I was, thank you, that was really informative, and I hope I can keep my packet, because I love the summary. But I'm curious about ways in which, you mentioned earlier, Damian, the need for cultivating boards that are based in the local community, right? And so one of the things I was thinking about, and putting on my hacienda hat here for a second, is could some of the larger 501(c)(3)'s, some of the larger CDCs and other nonprofits that operate in these districts contribute more, help more with board incubation, for lack of a better term, right? Helping kind of, okay, this is how you do it. We're going to hold your hands through the process, right? So you don't have to start from scratch. And then also perhaps also extend that to fundraising assistance. You know, we just hired, for the first time in our history, our first chief development officer, right? So we have the capacity now to potentially donate like a portion of her time, say, hey, you know, help, just, it could be once a month, it could be once a quarter, whatever it is. But again, provide some of that assistance, that kind of advisory type of assistance. So do you think those things would help? I'm curious to get a ground-level view about how that, how that could work.
I say we have a fair amount of participation from many of our partners that we're currently working with, either through the IBRN and also some just kind of the local partnerships that exist. Because of that, the boards have such tight budgets, they do so much in partnership already. And so they kind of have cultivated a lot of those relationships. And also, like many of the people that are willing to serve on a board are serving on a lot of boards and are at capacity. And so it's kind of trying to find like that new blood of people to participate in boards.
And I will say that hacienda's, there is, Rosa Heda is on the Cully Board, so that is, you know, you have an overlapping connection. But there's, you said a couple of things that I'd be like, yeah, we should probably have a conversation about that. That'd be great.
Okay. All right. Then, thank you very much. That was an excellent update, really appreciate it. So we have some public testimony on this item as well. Three people are here. Ashton Simpson with the Rosewood Initiative. I, Sangasi, I apologize if I've made any mistakes on your name, with Cully Central. And Leisha Schrecher.
That's fine.
Yes, thank you.
That's difficult to pronounce.
My apologies. With Division Midway Alliance. So thank you for coming.
Hello. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time and your ear today. My name is Ashton Simpson. I'm the Community Asset Manager at the Rosewood Initiative. Damian stole my thunder about Legal Services Day, so I won't talk about that, but I will highlight our Low Income Fair Registration Program, as well as our Transit Training Program, where we teach folks in the community how to use the new HOP system that Trimed has descended upon us all. All right, so since August of last year, we have been busy with taking the voices of the community and creating the Rosewood Equitable Neighborhood Plan and the Rosewood Conceptual Neighborhood Master Plan. This work is being driven by the requirements outlined in the JP Morgan Chase Planning Grant that we were awarded. And both of these plans are rooted in developing Rosewood and creating a more vibrant, safer, and healthier community. Our framework for the Equitable Neighborhood Plan is to develop the half-mile radius area from our current location and build on the investments being made by the city of Portland. The Equitable Neighborhood Plan is focused on addressing issues identified by our Community Action Group in the realms of housing stability, education, community health and wellness, transportation, climate change resiliency and place-making, cultivation of community culture, as well as economic and wealth-building opportunities, with strategies to address each of those issues. For Rosewood's part, this planning process is part of a broader strategy to mitigate involuntary displacement by taking control of underutilized land in which we would develop, being advised by the same community voices. It is also very important that we have a long-term coordinated vision while aligning public investments strategically and creating a healthier neighborhood. Over the next six months, we will be working with Sarah Architects to develop our conceptual Neighborhood Master Plan. This work will be guided by heavy community involvement, building on the strength of surrounding community partner networks, and incorporating the major public investments into a safer, healthier, and better-connected community. Currently, Portland Parks and Rec is set to invest $16 million in the Park Lane Park expansion. $20 million in safety and repaving improvements along Stark Street have been programmed by Trimed and PBOT. And 1.7 of dedicated fund, funding from PBOT for safety improvements on 162nd, totally $37.7 million of public investment committed to our community. And oh, by the way, if the T-2020 ballot measure passes, there will be an additional $90 million of safety improvements made on 162nd. So the work of, so the work of our Rosewood Conceptual Neighborhood Master Plan would be to connect those investments with extensive community engagement and workshop sessions and create the framework of our master plan, which we will use to develop the area from within for years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to present on this much-needed work. We look forward to continuing our partnership with Prosper Portland to achieve a safer, vibrant, and healthier Rosewood. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Prosper Portland Commissioners, Chair and ED Kimber Lee Brenham. Thank you so much for having me, giving this opportunity to share. So I'm Leisha Schrester, I'm the Executive Director of Division Midway Alliance. I'll talk about our cultural liaison support program. So before I start, I would like to let you know like what Division Midway Alliance is. As you may know, we are uniquely positioned in the heart of Midway District, which is home to longtime East Portland residents, first and second-generation immigrants, and newly-settled refugees, community members. 51% of the members in our district are non-English speakers. We did a community visioning session in 2018 with 90 members from Afghani, Burmese, Bhutanese, Somali, Latino, and Pacific Islander communities. And that particular session helped us identify and understand their needs and issues. We learned that it is very difficult for them to comprehend classes and services that are offered in English and are very advanced. And they told us they need business trainings and services that are accessible in their language and are culturally specific. As a way to address those needs, we launched Cultural Liaison Support Program. And as a result, with the help of cultural liaisons from these different communities, we were able to serve 1,050 community members in 2019. And this approach has not only supported our existing programs, but also helped us create new programs and create new grants. So for example, our existing program, storefront grant improvement and business support program are now more accessible to communities of color and minority business owners. Six out of nine grant recipients are minority business owners. Similarly, we are able to provide language support to community members during one-on-one business advising session. And this approach has also helped build leadership capacity within the community. For example, in the Burmese community, there's a lack of leadership within the community. So one of the member participated and became a community garden ambassador in partnership with Oregon Food Bank, and he led the training. And as a result of that, 12 households have access to land to grow their own food. And in 2020, we're planning to have, organize a mini farmer's market. So that's our goal. We also saw a significant increase in participation from communities of color at our annual event, Festival of Nations. Also, 75% of the festival planning committee members are from communities of color, immigrants, and refugees. And we are also one of the public site for Trimed Low Income Fair Program, as is Rosewood. 50% of the members enrolled received language support through our cultural liaison support program. And we are also developing entrepreneurship one-on-one training that is a pre-entrepreneurship training program for the communities who wants to start a business, and we'll help them get to like a different level. So it's a pre-training, and we are starting that this year. And we are also starting a new program, Youth Environmental Leadership Program, in partnership with Bureau of Environmental Services. So this approach has really helped us leverage to expand our program and services to communities from different cultural, cultural and linguistic background. And we believe that the best service can be given to diverse communities is by adopting practices that are holistic in nature and culturally specific in approach. And I believe this aligns with the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative model. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm A. Sangasi, and I'm the owner of Cully Central. So I'm here to speak in regards to the work I've done with CBA and their support in helping us achieve the goals that we were set up to do. So we've worked with CBA in helping getting grants to kind of do a facelift in the community, the business building that we have. And with their help, we were able to build a fence around the area, landscaping, make it more welcoming for our customers and the neighborhood people. And CBA has helped us in providing support and connect us with different networks of businesses that kind of help support what we were trying to do. They connect up with Prosper's to help us finance some of the fundings that we needed, and also help us connect us with Beneficial Bank in order for us to find loans. And those kind of network and support has helped us a lot as a small business owner and just starting businesses for the first time. It's kind of challenging not knowing what the supports are out there, what kind of resources out there to help us. As a business owner, it's just hard. And so with the help of CBA and what they've done for us, we were able to provide spaces for other community marketplace. We've partnered with Indigenous Marketplace, provided a free space for them to come and kind of have a market in the summer where they can have like 10 to 15 booths. It's hard for them to find spaces that weren't charging them money. And with the space that we have, we said, oh, you know, let's help support each other. Community supporting each other, small businesses supporting each other. So we partnered with them again for upcoming summer to help open up a space for them to provide free of use, for them to come and sell all the products that they make. So we just wanted to say how amazing CBA has been for us as a small businesses, and how much of their, the grant that they provide for us, and all the resources they were able to help us connect with each other. And I'm hoping that more of the resources that they provide will help other business owners do the same. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you for coming. Do we have any questions or comments?
A quick question, actually related to the Division Midway. You were mentioning the importance of cultural, culturally and language-appropriate assistance. What's your experience also with education levels in terms of providing that assistance in a way that again is in just culturally and language-specific, but also adjusted to the specific education level of the...
So are you referring, do we provide any educational training program to the communities? Or are you referring to the cultural liaisons who work with us? Do they have educational background? Can you clarify?
Actually, well, I think it would be a bit of both. It's adjusting the service and the service provider to the condition of the client, right? And I'm curious what experiences you've had in that regard.
Uh-huh. So our cultural liaisons, they are educated and has been to the high school here in United States. So they are aware and well-equipped on how to serve these communities. And they are trusted members of the community, and they know how to navigate, you know, different communication and different channels to support the community. And one example that I can give to you is, we work with Burmese community too, so they have problem with credit, you know, credit score. They don't know how to get it, how to talk with the banks. So what we did, we brought in Mercy Corps, Credit Point Northwest. We brought them and trained our liaison on certain concept of how to build their credit score, right? And they get those information, they, once they are familiar with that information, they reach out to their community and train them on that particular information. So that's how we navigate, you know, different challenges or problems that are being faced by the community. Yeah.
Do you have an opportunity as, as the executive directors and heads of your different neighborhood alliances, right, to be able to work together and share best practices?
Of course, yes, we do, yeah. Yeah, we have district managers meeting, we, yeah, we do that.
Okay, that's awesome.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, great. Well, hey, thank you very much for this update. We really appreciate it. And thanks for your great work in your communities, too. It's inspirational to hear about all the things you're doing, really. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have any other items. Our board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.